Well, they're just on that.
It doesn't normally happen. You normally don't have it and all of a sudden you.
We're going to get started. Discuss review of Highland Village City Charter with respect to possible future amendments.
So, the original city charter was adopted in nineteen eighty-six and since that time there have been six amendments. Anytime there are amendments done, it's put before all of the voters of the city. This is just kind of an opportunity for council to discuss if there's any interest in maybe doing another charter review. And the last one was done in twenty seventeen. So this is just kind of a short discussion on is there a consensus to maybe look at that?
I had asked Angie to put this on there. I just, and we're not going to spend a lot of time tonight on this because we have more important things than that. But so in your pack, when you got them, you had the charter. Hopefully you had an opportunity to look at it. So really, I just want to know, is there any interest in looking at doing charter review committee, doing it in-house, not doing it all? And letting, letting us know and then we'll have this on a future, further discussion each time.
And I think any charter review should be a citizen committee.
There has to be.
Yeah.
But with that said, there was a sage that told me something a few years ago, that the moment you open up the charter for review, everything is open for review. You can't just limit it. Therefore, be careful what you do when you open for a charter review.
And so, and exactly, so that's, and that's, that's good. So we did do some cleanups on, in twenty seventeen.
Yes.
You know, there, there could be some just cleanup to make sure that we're in align with, you know, state verbiage and stuff. Doesn't have to be.
I'm not disagreeing, but I.
A rewriting of.
I'm not in favor of opening it up for cleanup unless it's something that just has to be cleaned up. And I didn't see anything in there that.
You didn't? Okay. Over on this side, anybody?
I'm current with John.
Okay.
There's not a glaring issue. I don't think we need to. What prompted the review? What prompted the question now?
Well, we just haven't had, we haven't had one in a long time. But, but of course, where we are and our, our point in history, you know, it's not likely. And, and we have done them up to now. So I just had asked, let's, can we put this before council and see what your thoughts are, if there's any.
What frequency did we do them before?
It's varied. I mean, there's no, you, you can't do it.
You can't do it within, you can't do it in less than two years.
Yes.
You can't have a charter amendment election in less than two years. And that's, when I mean two years, I mean exactly two years. It's got to be two years in a day. We charter election, amendment elections. Yeah, I mean, unlike, unlike some of our cities that we represent, there's no requirement in the charter to have a regular review. I mean, periodically we do it. Again, like the mayor and Angie were saying, you know, in twenty seventeen, we did it largely because we hadn't, hadn't been one and, you know, what was the prior one to that?
Um, two thousand nine.
So it's been about eight years. And so it will, you know, if you do it, if you were doing anything like that this time, the first opportunity really to have the next referendum would be May of twenty-five. We were a little too late to start to have a November election for this year. So, so it will have been, again, about eight years. And, you know, there've been some, you know, there have been some changes in state law that may impact particularly as it relates to election stuff. You know, a few other things, but beyond that, I don't know that there's anything. We did a lot of that in seventeen. Fixed a lot of that kind of language.
So basically, I mean, if we were to review it now, if there were changes that needed to be voted on, we wouldn't be able to make the November election.
No.
No.
Correct, midnight.
So if we don't do it now, it doesn't mean that we can't. We just want to do it prior to the May elections.
Right. It would, but the, but because you have to call the May election usually by the end of February, it takes some time for council consideration, drafting the propositions, particularly and depending on how many propositions that, you know, it'll take more time for me to draft those. You know, typically you'd want to be, you know, you'd have to call the election and have all the propositions in place that the council wanted to consider, the public to consider probably by the first, second meeting in January, which to do that means with holidays in November, December, you're looking at probably having to wrap up, do most of your work September, August, September, November, October, November. You know, then, you know, we could be working on final report in December, you know, because we only have one council meeting in December typically. And this first meeting in January of twenty-five isn't until January fourteenth. So.
You have to stand up a citizen committee as well.
Yeah, so, so you're.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, so you're probably looking at needing to start doing something seriously.
Good luck with it.
Next month or early September.
Like to get something to make. Good luck with that. Like I don't think you could do that to set a committee to get the, you know, to get all the pieces in time-wise. You'd have to look to November of twenty-five.
It's, it's, May would be possible, but you're talking about possibly if, if you've got a committee to put together in September, you're probably meeting almost every week in October, November, at least once a week. In order to, in order to try to get something at least, at least a set of recommendations before Thanksgiving in order for us to put together a final report in December to present to the council in January. That's kind of, you know, just a bit realistic.
And I wanted to just see if there was any interest. That's why I, why I asked for it to be up for discussion. So far, I've heard.
It's a good aspirational goal for next year. The plan according to.
I mean, if there's not, if there's no need in it this year, there's no need in it next year. So, you know what I'm saying? And, and it can be in-house. If there's some things that we need to clean up with, to match state stuff, we can do that.
Or, or for that matter, because I know, I know Paul and Ken and, you know, have been looking at it from, you know, some of the sections as it relates to what are, what is the current practices of the city with respect to preparing for the budget, you know, timing frames on that and those kind of things. How much is our current practice and the historic practice been in relation to the literal language of the charter? And, you know, while I think we're, we're complying with the charter, sometimes that, you know, particularly some of the state law changes related to adoption of sales tax or property tax schedules has kind of impacted those issues that we made, that we haven't, you know, that have all come since twenty seventeen. So those may be some things we would want to look at. You know, again, those could be in-house recommendations.
I'm not hearing any screaming, oh my gosh, we want to do this. I like seeing shaking heads.
What was it, Paul? Anything that you see that?
No, as Kevin mentioned, the one thing about state law, if there's any kind of conflict there, that, that could be looked at. Like I discussed a few different items. For instance, one, it talks about presenting the bud, the capital budget planning and zoning commission. That's not been a practice. There's some other things with regard to the bonding of city employees that's really handled through errors and omissions insurance. It's little things like that. It's nothing that's really.
Practice that really is outmoded and doesn't need to be in the charter anymore.
Yeah, nothing really affecting the day-to-day. But if, if it was going to be reviewed, those kind of things you would want.
But again, the moment you open up, everything is fair game.
Right. Everything's fair game for recommendations from the committee, but the council can take her, you know, can accept or reject those recommendations too.
Agree, agree.
You know.
So does everybody have a chance to look at the charter that was there? If you may see glaring issues that we're going to shake ahead. Okay, well then we're going to move on. Thank y'all. I appreciate it. But take that off. Number two, receive a presentation on special revenue funds and follow-up discussions on the general fund budget until year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Mr. Herman.
That's me. We covered our general fund. So today, tonight, we're going to cover our special revenue funds. Special revenue funds basically are buckets of money, expenditures that are segregated because they have a restricted purpose for the funds received. And so you've pretty well seen all these before. Some of them are just real small and just kind of technical. And others are pretty dynamic. Debt service is a critical one. We have outstanding debt. And one thing to look at for this year typically is just our debt service schedule. And that will determine our property tax, INS portion of the tax rate to fund that. And it's pretty straightforward. All we've been talking about, funding our capital, large ticket capital equipment with a proposed tax note. And we actually have to do that in this fiscal year to have that start next year to basically accommodate our property tax and the way that that works to keep our basically a level property. You know, if we were to wait to do it next year, it would have ramifications on the property tax rate that we would end up with in future years. So we'll probably have our financial advisors here either at the next meeting or the one following to kind of present, you know, the, what that looks like. So I just plugged in just for a marker. It's going to be roughly four hundred and fifty thousand. You know, this shows the effect on the, on the tax rate. Probably a little bit better look at that to give you a perspective. The percent of the tax rate that is associated with our debt is kind of a benchmark. You know, in our really growing years, that was more like twenty, twenty-five percent. And so as we approach build-out and we have a little bit of new growth and as our tax base has built higher, our target range is like twelve to fourteen percent is kind of where we're always going to have some element of debt and we're always going to be reconstruction. There are always going to be big part, part factors. There's going to be facilities that need to be, you know, upkeep. And so you're going to have that ongoing. So somewhere in that range and, and just applying that is just a straight across the board payment. You know, we're a little bit on the higher end of these couple of years. So our, we'll top our financial advisor will probably structure it to where we even that a little bit. So again, that'll probably be the next meeting or would be my best guess for that. And these are the, you know, the list of equipment. We look it over. You know, our new practices look over seven years and all the big equipment, you know, typically eighty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars or more that we will fund all at one time. And then this seven years is the limit for a tax note. Is this council approval to do that? And then we would do the next one. You'll look over the next seven years and just have that going forward. And this basically has the advantage of just evening out our, our costs for them. Because if we have a particular year, we have an ambulance and an adult truck, that kind of kills the budget for that year pretty easily. So it's hard to really manage the, and we've done that for years, but things have gotten more expensive and, you know, our fleet's grown and our needs are more. So I feel like this is a more prudent way for us to go. So that's our debt service. So that'll have to, that will be updated based on, you know, the schedule that we get from our financial advisor. Municipal court, we have a couple of funds associated with their technology fee as a component of fines that are paid for traffic citations. Four dollars per citation and is basically designed to, for technology-related items in the court. We've used it for various purposes over the year. I've been talking too much tonight, so my voice is probably going to give out. It's didn't what it used to be. The, pretty much what we do now, we have a video magistrate that our judges use. Basically, they can magistrate people in the jail remotely and that's safer for them. It's more convenient. It's become a new standard. And so we have a program that allows for that and for two judges, it's thirty-six hundred dollars. And so given, given our limited revenues out there, we are pretty much just going to limit to that. Now carries for a number of years. You know, at some point in time, we'll have to get ADs to run a little bit or tickets to keep that balanced and, but we're good for that. On the building, security funds, another element of four ninety for citation collected that we get to for security enhancements for the court. So in years past, like say for the, the wand and the, and the metal detector or, and we use, you know, we use it for few things along the way, but we kind of just build our balance till we have a big need to fund something of a little bit larger scale. But for the most part, we don't have ongoing needs every year. So last several years, we just, you know, it's not a lot of money. We build a little bit at a time, but we have fifty thousand dollars that, you know, we, something presents itself that we have to upgrade. We have some funds that we can draw.
Channel ticket writers and printers both come into that fund too about every eight years.
Not billing security.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. The big ticket.
But we have paid for some of that out of the technology, but given our fine volumes. We're not, with the magistrate services, we're not, we'll have to fund that out of basically our IT budget. That's what we did last quarter. So, but it would accommodate things such as that. So park development fee, back when we were actually getting new developments and all that, we would collect park fees. And there are three components of that, community park fees, neighborhood park and linear park that actually is, is diverted to the four B fund now. But of those components per, per meter or lot that we get, and we just haven't had much in a while. So we do have some, a balance mostly associated with neighborhood park fees for service area two. And this would be probably primarily village park would fall for that. So we can certainly fund some projects there. Maybe that little trail section there that, that could be a good option for that. So, oh, we have an allocated for that. And over time, the community park fees we've used, like when we did Kiss Castle and other projects, Unity Park that we've diverted them for those uses, but we pretty much, we just have a little bit there now. We periodically will transfer that. There's always something going on at Unity Park. So police safety fund, this is just a vehicle where we get grants or donations in drug forfeitures, seizures and we have restricted use of those funds. We, you know, police and fire are both, we count for it there. We don't really budget too much just for recurring things and then we adjust it based on what happens during the year. The identified things or kind of our standard things, we usually get a grant for vest that we use every year. Unfortunately, our vest program, it costs a good bit more than that. So this just helps us a little bit every year to supplement that. And then our bike race where we have the, you know, donations and related costs associated with that in our expenditures. But that is to for fallen officers fund, that'd be a problem we do. Another component of municipal or citations is child safety fees. And those are collected, they're diverted to this fund. And then we in turn transfer those to the general fund to supplement, offset the part of the cost for our crossing cards, which is our individual use. And we've done that for a long time. So it's, that's usually somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand for that. So that's kind of where we're at. We have a little bit of balance there, but we kind of use it as we go.
So on the revenue and police grants, let's just definitely twenty-five, seventy, seventy-four thousand in. Expenditures, police grant related fifty-two thousand. So we're spending fifty-two thousand to get seventy-three thousand. So you've got a net difference of twenty thousand.
And the twenty thousand is transferred to?
No, I'm just saying, you know, here's your revenue in, here's your expenses going out. Usually when you've got grant-related money, that's to get grants. What I'm seeing.
Well, these are more grants are probably not the best. I mean.
Well, just, it's money coming in.
Right, right.
And what did we spend the forty-eight? Is that a, is that an expenditure forty-eight?
Yes, to, for shirts and promotion and all the related, I don't have an anonymized list of that, but. But yeah, that's to, to that program.
So understand that the money spent is money we collected. It's not.
No, I'm just looking at, I mean, I see revenue coming in seventy-three, police grant related going out fifty-one. So there's a net positive to the department of twenty thousand.
Well, this would be, including that would be the child safety fees as well as the donations for that.
Where, where do these fees, child safety fees come from?
Of court, of traffic citations.
Oh, got it. It's like, I have kids. I haven't paid that. Sorry.
Remember the fines forty dollars, but the tickets two hundred because of all those other fees.
Okay, got it, got it.
Big fee fund, this is basically from our cable companies and the intent with this is for our public channels broadcasting. The, we get one percent of revenues is kind of like a franchise fee from our cable. But if you recall from our general fund where we have the, the actual franchise fee from our cable companies, it's decreasing every year, you know, with basically Frontier and Spectrum. And, and one percent of this and, and we don't expect this, you know, they've been fighting hard to do this, you know, take this away for a good while. So we're kind of building balances right now. So we'll have those available. You know, the, the really, Spectrum wants us to upgrade to high definition with their broadcasting and they've wanted to charge us a lot of money for that. And we've just really resisted.
You want to be compassionate.
It's really not worth that because we can stream and probably reach as many people and do that with, with some money. But we didn't have a, we've used this to upgrade our broadcasting equipment in the council chambers as well as here and remote. It's kind of, we've got that kind of up to where we want right now. So we're just going to build our balances because we all know that it's going to require expenditures going forward. Okay, drainage utility. Now we're going to get in some more difficult discussions. Now, this is a drainage fee that we use for, for storm water drainage. And it's been probably one of the more successful programs we have associated with any fee that we've ever implemented. You know, pound for pound of what we actually accomplish and with that is being substantial. So, so basically, you know, the, you know, the five hundred thousand is, is our, is kind of a fixed income. I mean, the drainage fee is per impervious for each resident per month and that doesn't change. So it's impervious square footage times whatever the fee is. So unless we're bringing in new developments and new addresses and new impervious areas, that's not going to, you know, change. You can see it's going pretty steady. Over time, our cost increases obviously. And so personnel is one that does. And so you can see just going forward. And it'll vary a little bit because you'll see in the smaller funds like four B, core drainage fund, when you just have four or five crew, you know, a little bit of turnover or change in insurance selection or something like that will vary your cost for that. But, you know, it's relatively going to, for the most part, our personnel's increase four and a half percent here. Now, professional services, we've got several things kind of going on here. We've received, this covers both our estimate and, and our budget. Last year we had a hundred thousand dollars, actually back to twenty twenty-three, seventy-seven thousand and that carried over to twenty twenty-four. Or projecting fifty for twenty twenty. Okay, of that seventy-seven, we're going to spend, project fifty for this year and twenty-seven carry over to twenty twenty-five. So, so that's kind of a process for that. This is a periodic thing every so many years. Yeah, so it's not a frequent thing, but it's something that's a regular thing for me. And fourteen thousand budget for storm sewer journal maintenance permit plan every five years for that one TCU. And fourteen thousand budget for storm sewer journal maintenance permit plan every five years for that one T C U Q. So we project two for this year, and then we're going to roll over the rest of that for next year. So so these are kind of a fluid number. This number is kind of split over two years for the professional services.
Are there any drainage projects? I thought in theory, that's what it was for, to help fund drainage projects that are funded.
But there is overhead that goes with that.
Okay.
And so, you know, these are all required as part of the plan that we have to upkeep, required by T C Q and adherence to that. So that's all encompassed within that. So but the the end result, yes, is intended for the projects. Just like, you know, to do the projects, we have people, we have to pay the people to work here, you know, it's it's associated overhead with that. So here's where our projects are. So, you know, we have just regular ongoing, you know, we slate so much money for materials and and all that, and and we have just identified just regular maintenance type stuff, but we also have special projects. So so this year, we have a hundred and thirty two earmark for the drainage maintenance line item. And identifying that's where they establish a, I'm not sure where to browse.
It's lifting up the trees on the east side of twenty four ninety nine. We're office condos on. It's just a really mess in there. Bobcats, coyotes, kids, boys.
That's just to the north of that, right? Like where the trail starts between the trail and those little offices on the east side of twenty four ninety nine?
It's on the east side.
So we have fifty thousand first of three years for a hundred and fifty estimated for that. Red team twenty two thousand. We have ongoing mosquito control, thirty six thousand dollars a year, gabion baskets, various. Then we have also another lineup of generally about forty eight thousand, which is all your rock and other, you know, other materials that they use all the time. So that's really where our monies get spent primarily for that. And then capital, we have limited capital here because we just don't have the funding here. So if there's a big item and you, if you probably noticed on the equipment replacement for the tax note, some of the big items for for drainage associated with that, and and we just fund those through the general fund, and they pick up some of the smaller things. Like for this year, we have, well, we had an R T V replacement for this year and then a trailer for next year. But that's about extensive as we get in in this fund. But even where we're at now, and you can see, you know, bottom line is, we're not, we've kind of, we've run our limit on our existing fee. We're projecting a deficit for this next year. So it's time to update. So what's that look like? So currently, we have a dollar twenty in which we approved in twenty fourteen. So basically ten years, which is pretty good. Now, I think the previous rate of a dollar, the dollar, dollar, I think, was, I think, for ten years, ten to twelve years before that. So, you know, I kind of plugged in, what's it going to take, you know, based on, you know, we've kind of increased level of some of our expenditures just because things cost more, you know, you know, just buying rock costs more than it used to and and the other things. And we have our increases, you know, for personnel as well. So forty cents is what I plugged in to, and that would get us through a five year window, possibly go in six year, maybe seven. If we get some new homes coming in, you know, that could probably push it out in maybe a ten year that we're looking at. But forty cents would basically increase it just under a hundred and fifty thousand a year. Plugging that in, that gives us a bottom line funding that will take us through at least our five year window. So that would be our recommendation. We can certainly go higher, but, you know, if we can hit, you know, we know that we're going to do this periodically because once we do this, again, it's fixed again, based on what we, so over time, it's just inevitable that we're going to have to adjust. So what's that, you know, residential is the impervious amounts or, you know, that translates seventy five percent of our revenue comes from residential, that's our primary people paying the rates on that. And so currently, our average, you know, if we looked at all the drainage fees assessed, you know, the average of that would be five ninety seven. This would increase to a dollar seventy one with the forty cents. And two hundred twenty eight seventy, roughly half our households are at or below the average. Ninety percent are under ten dollars with a new rate. So, yeah, it's never fun to present that we need to adjust our rates, but, you know, it's been a while in this time.
Ken, or you go on. So with forty cents, you're you're estimating maybe four years before we're negative again?
Oh, I would say, well, five.
Okay.
You know, next year budget, then four, and then four years after. And probably another year, if new homes or new development of some kind come in, you know, that could take us out. We would just have to just want properties on that assessment to. We were able to go like ten years before, but again, our cost for doing stuff is just higher now. And so it doesn't go as far as what it did. So capital projects, you know, just we'll go to this briefly. You just saw that with the C I P. You know, basically, this is our outstanding bond issue for streets and parks. So they project out, you know, this is kind of, we have these monies and they plan out our projects. And we put a budget in there, but it just, you know, they do what, you know. So we adjust it every year. It's just, you know, kind of represents our best guess. So like in streets, you know, here's the projects, you know, they they put them all out. We never absolutely never follow the plan as presented, but it's kind of a best guess at any point in time. So many factors that go into that, streets and parks, kind of the same. Within the parks is the cabins, I don't know, somewhere in there, that we're going to talk about some more. So hold your thoughts and questions on that, but this is basically just. Capital Projects is the fund that we use to account for bond monies received and how they get. So our goal is, we got this money, we just need to complete all the projects and spend that money. And we, this takes five or six years usually to do so. So moving ahead to Core, you know, we have a little bit to talk about here. So first of all, we're just going to look at kind of our base where we're at in Core. Park entry fees, you know, we've really have a advanced well with that, you know, we have. This is kind of the breakdown of what we see for budget. We've been in that range for the last few years, so we will expect to kind of be there. So we're averaging, you know, seven hundred, seven fifty ish, you know, and Phil and I were talking today, yes, well, where were we at ten years ago? So I went back and looked, and we're roughly half. We've doubled that, you know, over a ten year period. This with enhancement to the park and management and encouraging people to come, using our fees. And so I would say these numbers are a little bit conservative because we've made some changes with the software upgrades to our our gate and machines, and and we're going to pick up some lost revenue for people cheating on us. But we don't know what that is yet. So we just kind of based it on what we know now. We optimistic that number is probably going to be a little bit higher, but it should be. I'm I'm assured it will. It's not sure to what extent. So like with the other funds, personnel, this is, I think, three positions and some part time with that. Pretty consistent. Professional services. Our maintenance contracts, professional services, so we're a little bit under what we budgeted, but we anticipated that we would have to add some contract services for more frequent pickups for parks. But with our New Republic contract, we negotiated for them to add more to it at no cost, so that wasn't necessary. So let's see, letting in that going forward. You know, the professional services, we added kind of a starting place of seventy five hundred dollars. Some of our big use days for, you know, July fourth, Memorial Weekend, Easter. Parks kind of gets overwhelmed with people that get used, and we got parks back out there. And when you get a lot of people, it can get a little crazy. So we were talking with P D and looking for their resources, and oftentimes they're there to help direct traffic. But sometimes we need a little bit more. So they have a group that they can basically contract with off duty officers to supplement if needed. So we just put some money there to evaluate as we go through a few of these to see inter judgment P D, if that might be warranted and just help ensure that everybody's safe and our staff is comfortable and it works well. So that's kind of a new thing that we're putting in. Supplies, we actually had a project budgeted for fifty five thousand for adding flex space. It compares adjacent to that restroom area where we had basically, you know, we kind of set up the stage there for our events, and it was kind of a muddy mess and wanted to kind of really solidify that and make it work better. We're having trouble getting contractors to bid on things that are small because everybody's real busy and, you know, we're not worth their time. So we're improvising, so Phil got his guys to say, okay, we'll take this on ourselves. And they did the project and did it for twelve thousand, so we saved some money and got her done. So net increase, hundred and forty five. So we've come a long way in our core lease. I remember back way back, way back when, when we basically transferred forty thousand dollars a year from general fund just to keep it afloat because we didn't have the revenue base and and weren't able to be self sustaining. And so that has dramatically changed. And so now we have a pretty, and we have a pretty good balance to work with, fund balance. So if you look at, you know, project that out for five years, we have a good solid, you know, a hundred thousand a year net increase that we can kind of have a good solid fund balance to deal with whatever comes up. So that's kind of a good foundation. So hang on to that thought, and, you know, again, that's a point of reference. So as requested, we would visit, revisit our pilot, no, I'll look at that. And it, and actually, we kind of, I thought through this a good bit and understand it's hard for you guys sometimes not being in the midst of, when we're working through this, especially when we're looking at, you know, different funds. We got capital projects, we got general fund, we got four B, we got funding sources, and we're talking about how utility does this. And then trying to put this all in perspective, we didn't do a good enough job explaining. And honestly, sometimes in these projects, you're not always absolutely predictable and go by the plan. You know, we kind of adapt on the fly and in most every, we, anytime there's a bond issue, it's a virtual guarantee, and none of the projects that were identified on that are going to happen exactly as we thought expected. And we adjust as we go, so that's kind of part of the process. But our job is to communicate that to you effectively to where you can understand what's going on and follow what we're trying to do and and review it. And and we want the, the, you know, you're a board of directors and you're reviewing what we're putting out there. And we want your review and evaluation of that. So this was a good exercise. So so with that, you know, previously, we'd shown you that we kind of updated to look at this. You know, again, there's lots of unknowns. We're giving it our best guess, using common sense, using experience, using what we see at other places around us. I will not guarantee any number up here that's going to be absolutely right five years from now. I'll tell you just that right up front. I think it's in a ballpark, and I think we're going to be pretty close. Unless something else happens that was totally unexpected, that could change that, that's always. But that's our best guess at this point in time. And the use for this is kind of determine feasibility, you know, is it something we should consider or is it a really risky marginal thing? And, you know, anything we do has an element of risk, but we're not big risk takers. But yet we don't want to be so passive that we don't advance. Because I would just use DoubleTree for an example. We really stepped out and committed full, you know, big time and depleted all our resources to finish that project rather than pay it over a number of years, and it turned out great. And it's one of our signature assets in the community, and and so that was truly worth doing. It's gone sideways, and it and it didn't, but it was a measured approach. We were pretty confident that we can make it happen that way. And so we're approaching this as kind of the same way. So we're showing you, that would be our net, you know, based on our expected revenues, expenditures, and it'd be somewhere in this, you know, if this were a little less, we would adjust maybe some things here to try to maintain that. But it would be somewhere in that ballpark. We also showed you that, okay, if you look at it, we actually showed you this as a point of reference where, yes, we issued debt for this, you know, because we have two point seven million dollars as part of that bond issue that we borrowed, and we're going to pay back over twenty years. We're committed to that, city's paid for, it's already accounted for in our debt service, and so that's a sunk cost in that sense. But if you want to evaluate the profitability of the project, you know, you know, the, what I did was take that total cost, you know, two point two million, you know, advertise that over twenty years at the rate we borrowed that. And so it'd be a hundred and thirty six thousand years what that would represent. Then on the utility side, that, you know, it comes up, yes, it's going to cost us more than what we anticipated to provide for the increased septic system to accommodate the cap. And so our estimate for that, just to isolate that part, was one point two billion. And associated debt service for that would be somewhere in the vicinity of eighty five thousand. So even factoring those in, it would still be at two hundred. Now, that's what we showed you. But there is more to that picture because that would just be a piece of it. So again, that's kind of what, where we were. I'm going to broaden the scope and step back and show you a fuller picture and show you a different perspective. And I think that'll give you a better feel for, and there's, and there's some policy decisions in this. I mean, there's different ways we can approach this, so they'll be part of the discussion as well. So looking at the utility, we're getting ahead of that. Well, you'll be seeing that budget next meeting. But within that, we basically identified this, this has been on the radar for, what, ten years? To take water service of twenty four ninety nine to bricks core, pilot and all. And the remaining parcel property we have there that could be in economic development, considering for somebody who wants to help. And so it's always, you know, it's been an expensive project. We expect that our guess is nine hundred thousand is what we expect that to cost. And so that is not something we have to do, but that's been talked about, planned for a long time. And that would be in our next debt issue for utility to accomplish that. We do not have the money to, at this point in time, to to do that, and we have it for a while. We knew that was going to be in our next bond issue. So along with that, and this is where we had, you know, again, projects aren't always fluid. And I'll tell you, we had a little miscommunication, I guess, in the process because our expectation, you know, you know, from some of us is that that project would include taking it up to bricks core as well as into pilot and all. But it turns out, and and it's kind of evolved and changed over time, and this has been a process. But that nine hundred thousand represents just getting it right there to that intersection there. So there's now, there's additional cost of six hundred and, you know, our projection is six hundred and sixty nine thousand to basically go down bricks core. Again, we don't have to do that, but, you know, they're part of our city. And 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 I'll, you know, certainly let Scott talk about this. He can talk a lot more knowledgeably about it, but the part of protection they have there would not meet our standards. In fact, we're pretty certain that it's pretty non existent with the system that they're on and the water pressure and and ability that would have the function. So we have not a lot of residences, but part of our. So we have not a lot of residences, but part of our residences theoretically are at risk, is some degree. And again, and there would be an expectation for everybody within city limits to be served by the city with utilities. So that was our thought process and why this was talked about and determined that this was a course of action to follow, again, over a period of years. And then in Pilot Knoll, this is a part that we control and that's ours. And we have infrastructure. And we did a little, Phil looked into it a little bit and talked to some Corpo. Best that they can recall is, a lot of this has been in place since the fifties. So we got infrastructure, you know, water lines and the septic and whatever there. And maybe not all seventy years old, but parts of it are. And they're going to be at least fifty years old. And so we have some very aged infrastructure that wasn't probably state-of-the-art at the time it was put in anyway, that is there to be dealt with. So those are, you know, the, so what it would take, you know, the estimate we got for, okay, if we go to do Pilot Knoll, replace the whole water system, replace the existing sewer or septic, and then accommodate also, because you would build it to accommodate the cabins and even expansion of that at one time, you would size it properly to do the whole thing. That would be three point eight million dollars. So you can easily make the argument that that's a given. And that's something if we don't do it now, we're going to do in the future, and it's going to cost a heck of a lot more. In the meantime, you know, we pay cross timbers for water service. We have leaks and I haven't meant to do the, go back and do more research on it. But we've paid quite a bit for water usage, more than what we should have just because, you know, leaks were hard to find and then deal with. And we've certainly had issues there. So.
Before we go forward, so basically out of that three point eight, you take the one point two out, which was on the previous slide, which is cabins, which means.
If we were to just provide sewer service for the cabins. And I want to show you that in another slide, but it's roughly one point.
We're looking at two point six million for Pilot Knoll infrastructure, even without cabins.
Yes.
And that's all I wanted to separate. So that's a project they evaluate on its own, greater minus. But then you go back to the cabin rental, which is getting us one hundred and forty-eight thousand a year in benefit. Is what the previous slide said.
I'm getting there. Just give me a minute.
You've got debt service at two point six million to account for that.
So actually, this is funded in the core lease part spot. So, so yes, we borrowed money that's in our capital projects, but it's intended for core lease. And so that's where we account for it. So I'm going to probably do the holistic picture and there's two viewpoints. So if we plugged in our revenues, and again, these revenues will increase. And I didn't go to a lot of trouble to try to be exact because that would be meaningless. But that just gives a point of reference for, you know, somewhere in that ballpark revenues and as well as the expenditures. So we add that into the previous five-year forecast. I showed you, you had a roughly one hundred thousand net revenue if you didn't do anything. Again, that knowing that we have this huge ticking time bomb of infrastructure that we're going to have to do at some point, but now we're all blessed and happy. And wow, we're doing really good there. Yes. So if we go down to basically add in the utility restoration. And if we look at, and then again, this is not just related to the cabins, but for the whole park. If we look at this holistically, that would be two hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, you know, debt service that would be associated with. When we go out and issue debt and we were to portion that to the part that related to Pilot Knoll, it would be that. We also have, and what I showed you before, is the cost of the previously issued bond for the park improvements for the cabin. So that would be one hundred and thirty-six. So you factor those in and let's say, okay, we determine, well, we're going to make this absolutely whole. We're going to pay back the utility fund for their part. Because basically the ratepayers pay for utility. It's, utility fund is actually an enterprise fund. Basically, it's designed and just to pay for itself. You charge rates to satisfy the expenses you need to maintain the system. So you can make the argument that, oh, this isn't really, is this really a ratepayer thing or not? There are a lot of residents that use Pilot Knoll. But you can make the case, well, that's more for residential, commercial. So, but let's make that assumption that we're going to repay utility fund as well as the general fund. Hey, we're doing this and it's for core. We're going to address it all there. So we're going to repay the general fund then. Okay? Even after we do that, we still have a hundred and fifty thousand net benefit projected. So we exceed where we're at doing nothing, knowing that we have a big issue we're going to have to face in the future. But we proceed with this project and we're able to accommodate all of the utility improvements and still make this profitable. And maybe not the amount that we were hoping to get before, but then this is our first phase. You know, we still have another phase that we can add. With most of the base infrastructure already in place, which obviously will have a higher net value realized from. So this is the best I could do to kind of provide that picture. What you would do is compare that to, okay, so what if we didn't do it? Say we, say we decided, okay, we're not going to do the cabins. We're just going to go as is. So we would have water upgrades. So that would be a hundred and fourteen associated with that. So one point five million. You know, again, that's just for the existing part. Sewer upgrades, one point one for just what's there now.
Does that include the new up by the gatehouse?
Well, that would just be service what, the infrastructure we have in place. Nothing provided for the cabins. And so, and then we already have, and this would be part of the discretionary. The gatehouse was part of that issue. That really sucks. I mean, it's really in bad shape. It needs to be replaced. So if we proceed with that, we have a professional service agreement for the development of all Pilot Knoll, three hundred and thirty-six thousand. Presumably, well, we've already used part of that. We would use some of that to accomplish. And these are more just related to the park, shelter upgrades, restoration improvements, and then the gatehouse. You can make the argument that just maintains what we currently have in place, apart from the cabins. So with that, we would be committed to six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Associated debt service for that would be the thirty-eight thousand. And so we would be at a loss of a hundred and twenty thousand a year to not, to remove the cabin. So that shows you the two scenarios of that. So that's the best way I thought of that could try to show the full picture and what we're really looking at. Again, these are all projections and not absolute. And, but, you know, I think we're in the ballpark though with that. And again, and there's policy decisions on, do we actually make transfers back to the other funds? Or do we have it? And that gives you a little bit more precision there. You know, there's not a requirement for that, but that's more of a policy that can be considered. And both would be right to replenish all of them or to, and we've intermingled before. We built Town Village Road Trail out of a bond issue. And it wasn't through the 4B because 4B didn't have the limit. So again, this is all for the overall city purposes and maintaining, you know, since we have control of that, all it knows is really a gem. And we have such potential to develop that more. There's not often that you have opportunity for a bond issue to provide a revenue stream to go ongoing to fund other improvements. And so that's really why we really went, you know, this goes way back. Bill Irwin was promoting this, you know, fifteen years ago, that we need to do cabin rentals and all that. So it's not a new concept. But that's really where, why we're excited about it and why we're kind of promoting this. But again, that's just, it was identified in a bond. That doesn't mean we have to do it. We, it could be redirected. If we did this, we would have two million dollars, basically. That could be redirected with something else. So again, that was just, I hope I accomplished.
No, no, I mean, this, this shows the whole picture. I mean, the two point six million was something that wasn't on the table in any previous discussion.
And you were absolutely right. And this was more appropriate language of that. So I apologize for that. So. So, does that make sense? Any questions?
So the nine hundred thousand that was going to take the water and just drop it, stop it at the, at, why were we doing that? Why would we take, why were we doing that?
Well, Scott likes to do things compartmentalized. You know, he does it in segments. And that's how he managed your projects. I mean, and that was just a different, I mean, you could, you could approach it holistically. We just had, you know, his, if I, unless I'm misstating this, I think in Scott's mind, you know, he was thinking there, then he was going to cost out the others. And then we just kind of assumed that, oh, because that was the intent, it was all included. And we just didn't, we didn't do a good job of meeting eye to eye on that over. Because this has kind of been a evolving, changing thing. I mean, it's taken a while to develop. It's the best explanation I think I can come up with that.
Right. It's been an ongoing identified project since we annexed all that property. We purchased the Timber Crest system. When we, when we annexed Briar Hill, all the way to Chin Chapel and then north to Brooks Court. So our utility system stopped at the Castlewood section. We waited for twenty-four ninety-nine to be constructed, which opened up the door for us to basically share permit with Textod. Textod didn't own that right away that crosses core. They have a permit. But there is a space in that permit that you can sneak in. The city can sneak in a utility corridor and get service up to Orchid Hill. And in our, in our annex documentation, we're supposed to provide water service to our annexed properties. So that's getting it there.
Okay.
Then another project to build it to Orchid Hill and provide water service down in Brooks Court. Those are our residents. Right now, a different water company is servicing.
Yeah, so.
Anything inside the park was, was different.
So we, well, they pay cross timbers. I mean, we pay for the water for that. And there's what, nine houses, ten maybe on Brooks Court?
On Brooks Court, it's probably eighteen.
Yeah, seventeen or eighteen.
Really?
We only pay, we have irrigation meters for the median. That's the only thing the city pays. They pay their own.
Right. But we have, yeah. And then you're going to, okay, so, and how much was that to do for Brooks Court?
Seven, maybe. No, it was six hundred and some.
Six sixty-nine.
Plus, plus getting piped up?
Plus nine.
Nine hundred.
So you get, I mean, essentially one point seven million to provide water for eighteen homes.
For our residents.
Right. But I'm just saying, it's a hundred thousand a home.
How are we doing on twelve inches, not an eight inch?
It's also going to serve the Bishop Robert Smith farm, the Bishop Robert.
We oversize a lot because of the property north of there that would service that.
It would provide for what kind of development north of there?
If and when that happens.
Okay, would it be like homes, paper homes?
Yeah, twelve inches is kind of big for residential land, a lot of things, I'm saying. So obviously thinking, not that.
You provide for the highest and best use for what most it could be. And that would be, I mean, you're paying that little increment, a little bit more rather than to go back and tear the whole thing up and redo it. So that's clearly what you do.
If there's no sewer.
If it's less than that, you're not penalizing it.
No sewer.
Right.
Oh, okay. And then to take it into, so, because we were just thinking sewer, but now in water as well.
Because our expectation is that utility would provide for the water. And, and that's not an unreasonable expectation, but holistically, it is the core. So you can look at it both ways. And you should approach it, at least make a determination of how you want to handle that. So, and that's what this is for.
If you were to just poke a well to provide water for eighteen homes, four hundred thousand?
You'd have to build a whole new system, ground storage, pressure tank, disinfection system.
I might.
It gets complicated.
Give everyone a grain and say, right along with.
We looked at it. I can't remember the dollar amount, but we looked at it and, because there's a, the corner lot on Orchid Hill in twenty-four ninety-nine is, is a commercial lot. And we looked at purchasing that lot, adding a well, pressure tank, disinfection. And I feel like it was not cheap.
Okay. I mean, it is higher ground, maybe that.
Do you have a gun?
There's no easy solution for a park that's set from the rest of the community. So, but that's, that's what we have. So we do have an option where we can accommodate all that and, you know, and hopefully even improve on what, you know, we're showing forward as a funding source. And that would be for both copper and pieces on forward. So that pre-well covers that. So, and then for the folks who, you were here before, I apologize. I'll try to get to this briefly for the.
For the two of us that weren't.
So, 4B, this is our estimate for the current year. Sales tax were above projections. Were about five and a half percent over last year actual. So that's a little bit more than what we anticipated budget-wise, positive. Little income, you know, the, we anticipated that with conversion of that concession area to a party room and it's taken a little bit longer. So we really won't have, we're just about getting ready to a point where we're.
It's complete.
So we'll certainly start picking that up next year. So we're still, we're up thirty thousand dollars more than what we projected or budgeted for, expected under budget. On the expenditure side, we, this is just a little bit of an accounting thing. In one of the supplemental requests last year where we brought our roadway mowing, trail mowing in-house rather than contract because we were having bad performance. And we could do it cheaper. And so that included a number of things. We had a couple of positions, had some, I can't afford this part-time labor. But, you know, in practice, it turns out that contract labor really been suited our needs for that. So we actually use that rather than the part-time to make that work. So that just puts it in a different category. So rather than personnel, that would put in professional services. So that accounts for the variance there primarily for the personnel. And then conversely, it will show up on the professional service side. Where we're a hundred and eight thousand under budget. There's various reasons, sixty-five thousand that we budgeted for the 407 connector evaluation studies. This can be pushed out to this next year. And then, like I said, the forty-three added back to that. And then with supplies, we had currents and current year projects we expected to do this year. They're going to get labeled within the next year. We usually have some of that. We identify a number of things and then life happens and things that come up. And sometimes we can't get to them, but we get to them eventually. And then we budgeted twelve thousand, which is kind of lonely there, representing a lease for a truck. Since we use the enterprise system rather than buying a truck, you know, we account for that. However, we basically, just as a practice, we fund all that out from this department. Being paid for is just not here. So that shows us that. So bottom line is, we're a hundred and seventy thousand in our expenditures. Not really, because some of that's carried over to next year. But to look at a snapshot for fund balance for this fund, we would be looking at about two million dollars. So then going into next year, budget, sales tax, you know, we're on a good trajectory. I don't know if that'll continue, but we budgeted for a four and a half percent increase. It's based on the trends we're seeing. I hope that proves to be true. And I kind of expect, you know, if we get inflation under control, there are so many things that can happen to change that. We'll see. Then on the rental income, we'll, we're going to be a little conservative and, but we're anticipating, you know, the use of that. And we're still trying to get it up. feel since, since what we have before. Then we switched the air conditioning, and now we've added this. And we don't really have a good gold standard for expectations yet. So we're still feeling that out. We're confident it'll be at least this, and very likely a little bit more on the real income, the double tree. Personnel, there's basically, the difference is, last year included that part-time, and this year doesn't, is really, kind of explains that. And for the service supplies, you know, we got, you know, which is forty-five, which is, again, the converse of the contract labor. And then supplies, well, actually, for the professional services, we got the sixty-five carried over, and then we have account for that as well, forty-five for the contract labor. Then on the parks maintenance, which is the bulk of what this expense is, the ongoing routine is roughly consistent. But the rest of this are one-time projects. Okay, we did this year, but we're not repeating them this year. So we'll have a variance there. Then we have some, okay, we budgeted for them here, but yeah, we're gonna carry it over to this next year. So it's gonna be a confluence of various things, where we have some new thing we're doing, like, like say this every five years, and so we've got an earmark for this year. So all in all, netting reduced by a hundred and forty-eight thousand. We had a, a number of things last year that aren't. So with, this represents our repayment for the associated debt service for previous bond issues, if the general fund did. So bottom line is, we're looking at two point nine million dollars. And that's a good place there. And then we look at our supplemental requests. So Phil's gonna give you a speed dial version.
It's gonna start right at the top here with the field robot, an ongoing two thousand dollar cost for maintenance. And we've been looking at this for a good five to six years. And the turf tank plus, the price is forty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Primary use would be a double tree soccer field and unity baseball and softball fields, but approximately seventy, sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the painting will be done at Double Tree. Current, what we use for labor, manual labor, any of those fields is a hundred and fifty-two labor hours annually at a cost of just under seven thousand. So the labor hours gained will be redirected to athletic field maintenance and minor irrigation. This is a demo day that we had with the turf tank. This is looking at what it painted. You can see the lines are extremely straight. And this is, it wasn't painted by the turf tank, but I wanted to give you a slide in here to see the amount of fields that we have out there. And this changes from season to season depending on glass's needs. So the cities that, other cities that use them, City of Dennis had there for four years, City of Allen for eight years, both speak highly of the performance cleaning and maintenance, both speak to the save, diverted labor hours, two other maintenance tasks, and then other cities that use it in the metro plates or downs. Capabilities are unlimited sports field layouts. You can program anything in there from football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, and it, and it's able to save it. GPS technology for remembering field layout, so it will remember if we move it from Double Tree and we move it to another site like Unity, we'll be able to pull it up on the, on the Samsung iPad that's down here later in the presentation. It has free format, excellent creation, eight-hour battery runtime, and then proven to be a valuable piece of equipment within Parks Maintenance Side. So the term here is one full-year warranty, covers all repairs under normal wear and tear, purchase maintenance subscription after one year is two thousand dollars annually. And both the City of Allen and Dent recommend the maintenance subscription. You receive a loner and ease of repair process when it goes down, and very little interruption of service. The battery cost is about seven hundred and fifty dollars at last five-plus years. I guess Allen that had eight years, they haven't replaced the battery yet.
How long does it take to paint one of the soccer fields at Double Tree?
You know, I wish I had that, that for you, but I don't. But what I can tell you, that at the minimum, it's half the time compared to a turf tank. So the next supplemental request is upgrade to electrical system at Double Tree Ranch Park. Backs for food trucks, bounce houses, and decorations for seasonal events. Electrical service, we costed it out with the engineering, is a hundred located in the parking lot at the Sergeant Dennis Oliver Event Center in the Billion. Removes the need for vendors to bring generators. Creates the enhanced event experience by reducing noise pollution caused by gas generators, generators, and it's safer for the events that it'll be used at, is Wind Down with the Ranch, Christmas at the Ranch, Amazing Race Concert Series, and others. It also allows, this is what we're excited about, allows for other recreational and event options, like a pop-up farmer's market, food truck events, Taste of Titan Village, if we wanted someone to come in and do something like that, other type of events like that. So this is a layout for Christmas at the ranch, and you can see where the activity is around the horseshoe. Here's our food vendors in this area and also in here. We've got activities over here, bounce house, slides, ice slides, and then reindeers. Just to give you a picture of what goes on. And this is another angle at it. It's a very popular event. You haven't been? So the distribution and usage, eleven fifty amp receptacles for food truck, food trailer sound and lighting. Mechanical activities also, like mechanical bull, just those type of, of, of event features that add to the experience. And then there's three twenty amp receptacles for Christmas tree and decorations, inflatable play activities, seasonal decorations. This is the engineering that we, we already paid for the engineering, and this just shows the location of the receptacles. You can see there in the, in the areas where we have the activity started. All right, the next one is add vertical interactive play elements such as tipping bucket spray heads, hot slides, and other equipment to the splash pad at Double Tree Ranch Park. We'll run into that at seventy-five thousand for the first year. So addition of interactive equipment, enhanced play experience, cultural and visually inviting. Maintenance is minimal. The only thing that we have, and we currently have that out there, and every splash pad does, is display tip, spray tip cloggings, which are easy to take care of. One-year standard warranty. The manufacturer is Water Odyssey. It's the same company that designed the splash pad, which is good, so they know that these features will work. And this is a visual of the large splash pad area, and you can see that, you know, it's just a lot of vertical spray heads. So we're adding something in there that's a little bit more interactive. And these are the actual pieces of spray equipment that we're looking at out there, out there. That was recommended by Water Odyssey. And this is a renovation of the trellis around the Double Tree Ranch barn. The new structure will be made from steel, solid roof to keep the water from flooding, and it would be an insulated roof deck. And this is a cost that we got from an engineer. New lighting fans would be installed, LED lighting, and it would enhance user experience. I want to go back. Mr. Feaster pointed this out earlier, just basically where it's located. Sorry, I didn't add a slide there, but to show you it's this area right here. And this is the trellis. You can see it's not a whole lot of shade protection. So thi- this will be an enhanced feature that will complement and supplement also the additional shade that is out there, and plus for parties and rentals, and now the rental area.
And this is a projection for, it's not this year's budget. It's, it's actually, Phil had an earmark for next year, but just to show you what you expect going forward. Coming in traction.
And the reason why we have it there is because we're having some failure out with the lattice. It's, it's wood. And, you know, we can, we can go back in and go back with wood. I, I really think this needs to be solid shaded, and it'd be a standing seam roof to match what is there. I think we'll have a better user experience for the community.
Are they, are they extending the current roofing? Are they?
No.
On top of the roofing?
Underneath it.
They go underneath it?
Yeah, that roof is two stories tall, and this is only about a.
So those come up underneath and continue the same angle?
Well, not the same angle as the existing roof. No, it'll, it'll be slightly sloped. It'll be the same roof, unless you're.
Just at a different?
Yeah. Yep. We'll get it to drain.
Those the trellis that we can see in the picture, are they taking it all the way across?
Yes, right here.
Just that, oh, all the way over to there?
Yeah, but we're not gonna do this section because that's on the way to the bathroom, and no one really hangs out. We don't see the use. We're gonna, and, and I don't necessarily think we need to take it that far. We just need to be in front of, of the new party room. And, and this party room, I can see this being highly used by the tots, the little kids. So it's, it's gonna be a great amenity for them.
And this is not this year?
No.
You're just there. But the other two items that were on here, the splash pad's not this year, it's next year, but the other two items are this year's?
No, the splash pad was, that.
All of these are, a piece of it.
All of these?
Those are.
Okay.
Yeah. So the splash pad is in two parts, seventy-five thousand for this year and the fifty thousand.
Any reason not doing it both this year?
Yeah, money.
No, I mean, we, well, no, this is, this is, wait, no, this is out of the four B, the money's there.
Yeah, and we can, we can easily do it, yeah.
If you're gonna put it out for fun, do it at once. It's not like we're issuing debt for that.
We may jump on that, John's saying that, they're done now.
We do it? I would do it all at once.
Well, that would, just to go back, I know we're changing meetings here, but that was a question I had is looking at that fund balance for bringing in nine hundred thousand dollars, we're not even spending close to that. I know we're building that up for something bigger, but fifty grand is not going.
Right.
I would do it.
So, and I guess just to reiterate the common question I had before, just so everybody's clear, the addition of these interactive play elements isn't going to disrupt the splash pad. We're gonna utilize the existing spray heads, but change them out for the elements, right? So there's no destruction, no, no major construction of the splash pad happening.
And be open by Memorial.
Yes, that, that, that's the goal.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Will the fixtures meet, will the fixtures meet the theme of the ranch? Because one of them was a little moderny. I mean, will the fixtures be in line of what the ranch is, or ranchy and less moderny?
No, probably not. The, the fixtures are designed to draw, you know, draw people in. So it is gonna be a little bit different, like playground equipment. Yeah, it's a play, it's a play element. So there's, there's, you know, architectural aspects that draw people into it, especially kids.
And when all the rocks went away, that took away a lot of the, the rural, but also made it a safer.
Yeah.
If you're gonna bid this second part, are you gonna throw in some shade? Like we talked about, if you're, do it together?
No, that wasn't the plan. What I was gonna do, and I, I still need to do the work, the legwork, on can we do it? And what the discussion was in the four B, it came up, it was a great point, is that other splash pads in the area, especially Louisville and Carrollton, or Flower Mountain, Carrollton, is that they have a shade structure over their splash pad. Now, Flower Mountain, their situation, it's a much smaller splash pad. So from, from an engineering standpoint, we, we need to make sure that we can do that and fly a sale over from one end to the other. And what does that look like? Or the hybrid, can we add pieces along the backs, backside and, and other pieces that are cannoli or open into that? So I'm gonna come back to four B with, with some information, engineering and cost and things like that, and different options. So that'll be not this year, unless four B directs us to, but more, more likely next year. Does that answer your question?
They have an armadillo. See that? I'm looking up Water Odyssey, they have an armadillo.
But the Water Odyssey needs to match what's out there.
I know, I just, I just was very excited, looking at the different things. They gotta, they gotta look, they got a four by four too.
Well, I think that, that we definitely need to add stuff. Is there a sign that says adults can't walk with their kids on the, in the splash pad? I was told that.
Not our staff.
No, no, the, the, a sign says you can't, the adults can't be on the splash pad.
No.
Okay, good. I was like.
Eight months to eighty years.
I'll let her know.
Somebody must have been just not having a good day.
I just wanted to make sure we don't have sign up that you can't go down there with your kids.
Thank you, thank you.
So with the supplemental, we're looking at two point seven million, so great shape looking forward. Again, this, this is with no new projects, and we have a, we're to a point now, and, and in the four B, we identified some new projects that would be for consideration. You know, we put out the four oh seven connector and fill in along twenty-four ninety-nine trails and sections there, and George Park and some other filling things. And so we have a lot of things on the list that we could actually work on.
Hey Ken, real quick, sorry. The sales tax up there, that's a half cent, the same as we did at DCTA, or the allocator contributed DCTA. So that's what I was looking for two weeks ago when I was asking. So that's basically a.
That's our DCTA.
That's our DCTA.
Million dollars.
Where are you seeing it?
This is the same amount.
I think we need to consider a grade all and a new back truck.
What are you trying to build?
I think there's some shared equipment.
To have a second.
And so basically this shows that we are finally to a point where we built our balances back, and it took us a long time to get. And so our plan is, and our suggestion is, the FM four oh seven connector is our primary going forward, lynchpin of what we really want to solidify and where we want to start, and solidify what is that gonna cost? And, and so by putting that in the FTCIP or as a project to consider, that opens it up for, we can use four B funds. We got some DCTA trip money, a balance that we possibly could use for matching funds. We're certainly gonna look for grant opportunities and leverage those as best we can. So once we get a, a feel and a really kind of a project scope and identify what we want to do, then we can evaluate, so, okay, how much do we have to commit here, everything else? Okay, how are we gonna use it? We can use this to fill in some of these smaller projects. We, traditionally what we've done is, we've used this as a basis for, you know, like I said, this is debt service here. We can issue you debt, you know, we can issue you a ten million dollars in debt to build new trails, and, and money so we can accommodate easily with this, with the revenues that we need. So we have options. And so rather than jump out though and start doing things, we need to figure out what our plan or anything is first. And then as soon as we do that, then, boy, let's get going. There's a lot we can do. So this is, again, a long way, a point that we've been working to get to in, in working for four B. So there's our special revenue funds. Looking forward. Yeah, we're checking them off. Utility fund, actually, the next meeting will pose a tax rate. Tax rate, you know, I, I did get the final tax roll, I just didn't have a chance today to look at it, but my guess is we're gonna reduce, well, I know we're gonna reduce our tax rate. And, and so that's what will pose, I guess, for our next meeting, that we look at that.
The last movement through the general fund, Tim Smaller talked about us going back through gays and nays. When, where's that at?
And we'll probably follow up on that either after the utility fund next week, or then we'll follow. You know, we, we always allow for, well, every meeting to follow up. We just, I, I knew this meeting would be too full. I'm tired, I'm sure you are, tired of listening to me. And then, you know, the last meeting in August, you know, we'll catch up in anything. So we still have two options. But we, we go through that, we're ready to address questions that we've received.
And if you do have questions on any of those supplementals, please.
And if you do have questions on any of those supplementals, please get them to us. We've gotten some responses back from council, so we're preparing those answers. So if you haven't gotten that to us, please...
Anything today? Follow-up questions, yeah, that's what we're, you know, this is, we're working on this together.
This is overwhelming, and it makes our heads spin off. So it takes a little bit to digest, it does me anyway. I, I would digest and think of.
And so, you know, we're all gearing for September when we actually, the two reads that we approved the budget. So we're getting there. Utilities, you know, utilities is gonna be a little bit of a challenge because if you've never seen, I showed you the project list for the utility fund. That's a bunch of big debt issue that would have to accommodate that. And we don't really have space for it right now, so we're got to be working. So we'll talk about that then.
Are you gonna email out your presentations? Sorry, do you email out the presentations from today so we, it's hard to look at stuff if you have all stuff.
I hate to be that picky, but is there any way we can get page numbers on the slides?
Didn't it, aren't they?
I just, I wasn't seeing it here. Just, I mean, it's easier for me to like write down a page if I need to revert back to something.
Basically what I do is copy it to PDF, so it's not... And so I thought it would, well...
You can make it auto-note card when you make a PDF.
Oh, I can find somebody. You know, I know, he has to re-burden your money.
The youngest person in the room.
Even if we're sitting here, right, I'm not gonna say, go back to slide ten, right, instead of, go back, no, go back.
I'll just find somebody that's a full program, that's...
Send it to me.
Oh, well, we got, we got copies here, we just don't have for everybody.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Oh, yes.
When are we back to suits and ties?
Not till after Labor Day.
Okay, cool. Well, that's a critical.
That is very important.
I think we need to do it based on like a certain number of days at a certain temperature.
Yes.
No, it's Labor Day.
Remember we did five days in a row of eighty or below?
Memorial to Labor, Memorial Day to Labor Day.
You are pulling out the southern mama there.
I am, no.
Put your white shoes on.
That's right. Don't wear white shoes after Labor Day and always put your suit, your ties on. All right. No other question, comments on that? Any clarification of consent or action items on that?
This is gonna take a while.
No, this is fine.
Can I clarify, there's nothing on the action?
There's nothing on the action. Nothing on the consent, so, yeah. We should be able to get through that, and we got through this in a very timely...
Eighteen minutes was the record.
Oh, I'll read fast. I'll pray fast and read fast. Come on, Tom. Okay, anything else? Well, if not, then we reserve that.
Evening.
I'm so far up my neck, I can't get this thing thing on.
Oh, I can hear myself. Welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is July the twenty-third, and it is seven thirty-five PM. Again, sorry, we're running a little bit late. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and let the record show that all council members are present, with the exception of Councilman Cox. So we are gonna get started, I'm gonna lead us in prayer, and then we're gonna stand for the pledges, so please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts, the opportunity to serve our community. Grant us wisdom, patience, and understanding as we discuss and make decisions that will affect the lives of our residents. Guide our thoughts and actions as we lead with integrity and fairness. Help us to work together, respecting each other's perspectives and striving for the common good. May our efforts bring prosperity, peace, and unity to our community. We ask blessings upon this meeting and upon the men and women who serve our community and our country, both here and on foreign soil. Thank you for loving us, thank you for forgiving us. In your holy name we pray, amen. Thank you, please stand. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Microphone, I'm gonna have to do something different. Okay. Now we're gonna have mayor and council reports on items of community interest. Council, does anyone have anything? Yes, ma'am.
Don't forget to get your applications in for boards and commissions, it's due July thirty-first. And there might be some upcoming new opportunities in the fall as well, so please consider volunteering for the city on one of our boards or commissions.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody else? I just would like to say thank you to Scott, Kristen, and the city staff for taking care of the storm waste and getting all that picked up. It was a long process, I know, and I know we had to bring in more people, but it sure does look nice now that it's all gone. Thank you guys, we appreciate it. Anybody else? All right, well then we're gonna let the city manager and staff report.
Mayor, I just have one item, and then we do have a video tonight. The Texas Fall and PD Tribute Event is set for Saturday, October nineteenth, at Doubletree Ranch Park. The city is seeking sponsorships for this event to help raise funds for the families of Texas police officers who have died in the line of duty. Additionally, registration is open for the 5K and the bike race. Register now with the early bird rate of twenty-five dollars after July thirty-first, the registration fee will increase. The event includes a 5K run in the morning and then in the afternoon, the police and civilian bike race, a kid ride with a cop, kids' own vendors, food trucks, and live music. Sponsorships help us put on the event and reach our fundraising goal of forty thousand dollars. And you can visit TXFallAndPD.com for all the details. And that is all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome to Experience Highland Village. I'm Taylor at The Sweet Shop, and I am with some of the sweetest people I've met yet, Dustin and Tyler Billy's. Well, I am excited to be here because this truly is the sweetest place, everything from lollipops to smores. Tell me, when did you start this and why did you choose Highland Village?
We live locally in Highland Village, and over the last few years, we kind of started talking about how Highland Village does not have a candy store. And as I was coming to the end of my career in teaching, we decided that we would go for it.
Well, about how many varieties of treats do you have here at The Sweet Shop?
Gummy, hard candy, jelly beans, taffy, and chocolate. Customers can order it online, or we can make little boxes for companies and do corporate gifting.
What is the most unique item you think you have here?
We have really been building up our international section. Japanese candy and UK candy, we have found have been really popular with our customers, and so we're actually in the process of building out those sections.
What is your favorite candy, Taylor?
But it's the spicy mango gummies and the chamoy peach rings.
What was it about Highland Village that made it attractive for you?
Well, I think it was the convenience of where, really, this is an ideal spot. This is the expanding area, small businesses are all located in the area, shops, the restaurants. You can go in, grab something to eat, and then right after you can come in and grab really any of the sweets that we offer.
And then for people who are looking for that hard-to-find gift, or maybe they have someone in their family that's difficult to buy for, what would you recommend about The Sweet Shop?
You know, if they like chocolate, or if they like gummy, or they like sour, they get to choose, and that's what makes us really different from any other place.
From everyday favorites to those hard-to-find nostalgic candies and sweets, The Sweet Shop has everything you could ever imagine. Choices, choices, the choice is yours, right here at The Sweet Shop. I'm Taylor, thanks for joining us for Experience Highland Village, we'll see you next time.
Great, now I'm hungry for candy. All right, we're gonna do visitor comments. One wishing to address city council, the last speaker request, I have two. And there is a three-minute limitation on all persons addressing city council. Please understand we can't comment when you do. So Ms. Poyer, you're first? Yeah. And if you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Mayor Will Cox, members of the city council and city staff members. My name is Linda Poor. I live at one oh six Monday House Lane. I addressed the council at the last meeting on July ninth regarding an experience dealing with a skunk. Well, today I met with Police Chief Doug Rime, and we discussed the issue at length. He showed me the animal control policy regarding nuisance animals and wild animals, which a skunk can fall under either policy depending on circumstances. He also assured me that the response to a skunk call has been addressed and that a sighting of a skunk during daylight hours will be handled with an onsite visit and recommendations for how to handle it. I would like to thank Chief Rime for his time and attention to this matter. I would also like to thank Mayor Will Cox and Councilperson Hurst for their attention to this matter. My faith has been restored in you guys, thank you so much.
We're glad, we're glad. Okay, and next is Mr. Solo, Mark Solo. If you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Mark Solo, I lived at seven thirty O Colo Lane for thirty-one years. I started a group, bicycle group called Pathfinders Fund Cycling in two thousand and ten. We have about twenty-five hundred members, one of the largest in Dallas, and I'm also president of Carrollton Cycling Club for about the last five years. And we do specialize with pathfinders on riding on multi-use paths. So I could say I'm kind of an expert in that. And one of the things that you may not be aware of is that Flower Mountain hasn't built a sidewalk in years. They only put in multi-use paths. To be a multi-use path, according to Texas statute, has to be at least eight feet wide. Of course, they've been a growing community, and they've had the advantage of, the developers usually pay for those. So why put in a five-foot sidewalk, which is not very safe because kids have to get around? Now they're all on electric scooters and they can go really fast. And the problem is, when they're passing each other, they need the space. So I would, my recommendation for city council and Parks and Rec, I think, do the trails, multi-use paths, is to follow the example of Flower Mountain and others and only put in eight-foot or wider multi-use paths, just for the safety of the kids and for us. I had a near-death experience about a year ago on twenty-four ninety-nine. If you may know, they only put in a five-foot sidewalk on that one side that it's on, near the train tracks and north up to the market trail up by Walmart. And I was on that on my road bike headed to lead a ride at the shops at Highland Village. And there was four teenage boys on mountain bikes coming my way. And if you're not aware, a lot of that trail is right up against the curb for twenty-four ninety-nine. So if you fell off, there's cars going over fifty miles an hour, three to four feet from you. So it would be instant death. And anyway, I was gonna try to move over when there was a space and just stop and let these boys, I couldn't see them all because they were in a line and it's such a narrow sidewalk, coming at me. And they all decided to go, because they had mountain bikes over into the grass. I'm on a road bike, and we're sharing the space. So one, I go by one... into the grass. I'm on a road bike, and we're sharing the space. So one, I go by one, two, three. But the fourth guy was looking at his phone, riding without hands on the, on the handlebars, and I was screaming at the top of my lungs and hitting my brakes because I only had a second to see him. And we had a head-on collision, broke a bunch of stuff. But I didn't realize at first how close I was to death, because we both kind of fell straight down with a head-on bounce and fell and landed on the sidewalk. Had we fallen over either one of us or both of us, we would have been killed. And then, then something would be done about it. So that was a mistake. When it was originally built, I had suggested to Linda Cornelius way back to connect the trails there with the money that we're gonna use for the tunnel. That's another story. I'm out of time. But anyway, that's, that's a good example of what could happen if you don't. The other big problem is the ledge, if you only have a four or five-foot sidewalk, and a kid is on a bicycle and he falls off the ledge, this happens to adults a lot. You try to get back on, there's usually a little drop-off, and you wreck. So that's another reason you need wider, for safety, kids going to school, you need the wider multi-use path. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately, and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. On the consent agenda is consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on July the 9th, 2024, and number 12, consider resolution 2024-3129, receiving an annual report from the Highland Village Community Development Corporation, and approving the annual updates to the facility's development capital, capital improvement program. Council, Mr. Feaster?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve agenda items 11 and 12 as read.
Okay. We have a motion, council. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fixmuller, seconds. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay. Carrie, 60. Action. We didn't meet in closed session. And oh, look, we don't have any action agendas. So we're gonna move on to late work session. Status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Does anyone, council? Does anyone have anything that you want for future agenda item? You're gonna need to turn your light on.
Hold on, I sit cross-legged and.
Oh, that's right.
Have to find the button. There. Is it on?
No.
Is it on now?
Now it is. Yay. Because I don't see your hand sometimes.
Sorry.
Ms. Hur.
So I would like to lead, move on to discussions to, to an actual ordinance before council that addresses rental property, be it short-term or long-term, that addresses the health and safety measures, like extinguishers and fire alarms. Also, what information needs to be displayed in the home about city contact and city regulations, to include defining what a nuisance property is, and what actions can be taken for a nuisance property, X number complaints, whatnot. I have been getting phone calls from neighbors that are citizens that there's rental, not just rental and not just short-term, but both. The neighbor's property, they keep running over neighbor's property. They store their work trucks and their commercial vehicles. That we have one home that's red-tagged a black door, but it's still being rented. A back door, a red tag from a building permit has not been approved, but it's still being rented. And so there, I understand this is controversial from getting sued and all, but when all the other cities have some kind of rails, they're just gonna come to the places that don't. And I think Highland Village needs to get with the program. So that's what I would like to ask.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Do we have any other update?
Mayor, I do want to give one update. First, I want to thank Ms. Por for being at the meeting again today. And as you mentioned, Chief Rime spoke with you today. I wanted Chief Rime to give a little bit of an update to council. We've had a lot of discussion about skunks and other wildlife over the past two weeks, but wanted Chief Rime to give a little bit of a rundown when we changed our animal control ordinance, and why we made some decisions as to the way we handled skunks, and possibly some alternatives to maybe better address some of those situations. So Chief Rime, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Sorry, we're not, might not make that time limit with this.
I'm sorry?
Not gonna make the 18 minutes.
I'm not gonna make the 18 minutes. Thank you. Thanks, chief.
So I had the pleasure and opportunity to meet Mr. Poyer today. Por?
Por.
Por.
And first, I want to stress that, you know, sometimes we don't know until we know. And really, that was this instance, and want to clarify that somewhere along the line after we created the ordinance, which was a very long process. We had about a six-month review in our department when we put that thing together, initially, initial for preparation or presentation discussion with council, which went another four months after, if not mistaken. So it took almost a year to implement that, after those, that ordinance had not been changed since 2001. We took ordinances and reviewed cities around us for that process and across the state. And I truly believe that other cities, after ours went into effect, copied ours, because we put a lot of effort into it. And one of the issues addressed in that was nuisance animals, and specifically with skunk removal. And there's options coming down around. What we found in our procedure was, instead of dispatching an officer, an animal control officer, which we have one, Wes, and then I have five backups who are state-certified right now, with a three-day course to understand how to handle certain animals and whatnot, was that when they heard the word skunk, they just said, we don't, we don't handle skunks. But we still needed to go and investigate for the, the safety concerns, primarily for rabies or, what's the other one? Distemper. Distemper, exactly. So we know that after 10 days, animals pretty much phase out after they have rabies. And we have an animal control ordinance that hopefully protects our, our, our animals, our pets, because you need to vaccinate your pets for rabies. People is the other concern. So an absence of that, sending somebody out who is trained to look and, and get a good idea. We are now testing that process, since this came up to say, all right, we send somebody out all the time. The biggest thing we did away with skunks and the disposal of them from the city standpoint is, we really didn't, quite frankly, want to be the disposer of skunks, okay? Unless there was a true, not just for nuisance, unless there was a true reason that they were attacking people, chasing people down, things like that. So that was implemented in there. Also, for Wes, who's my only animal control officer who had been sprayed numerous times before that ordinance was put in place, it would knock him out of service for almost eight hours. He was done for the day. Our equipment was contaminated. We didn't have a good way to contaminate. If you've ever been sprayed by a skunk, you understand that process. And even, even putting them up in a freezer, okay, and holding on them for disposal would contaminate our freezer and building and whatnot. So that's where our skunks, I'm not saying they're completely off the table. We'll investigate more in, in the future and determine that point in time. Offer other services. We found services as low as $30 in the city for a trap rental, and as low as $90 for disposal or removal, excuse me, removal of, of said skunk by a local service. And there's more expensive things out there, yes. But today, Mark Stewart was working on updating our website to provide some more of that background. So when you find animals or find animal control stuff, just to sort of guide you a little bit better. And the dilemma the city usually ends up in is, we can't give referrals and recommendations to use a company, just as we don't for not using them. So we, we try to stay away from that, but we're gonna list a few that are common in the area that have been used, just to help people out. The animal control ordinance is 15 pages long. So it is a long, long, I mean, I usually have to pull it out when we're looking stuff up, and, and some of it cross-references back and forth also. So again, the biggest thing was letting us know, which she did, and, and we've hopefully corrected that problem. But again, let us know in the future. Continue to let us know if you have any animal control issues or problems in the city. It's how we, we budget our, for our resources in the, in the long run. You know, how many people we have, how many people we have trained, what kind of equipment we have. But it's all meant, again, to keep our citizens safe. The nuisance issue is, is a gray area, but again, with Wes investigating, it's always an opportunity for, to us to use our, to think outside the box.
Perfect.
And I could go on forever, but I think I'm gonna stop right there.
Okay.
Unless you, other questions?
Council, anybody having skunk questions?
Good.
I think, thank you, chief, for the debate.
Thank you.
Glad that it, we got it worked out.
Yes.
All right. Council, does anybody else have anything else? Well, if not, then we are adjourned at, what time is that? 7:55.